I'd like to call this meeting of your Danville City Commission for Monday, June the 11th, 2018. The hour is 5:30. I look to my left and to my right. I'll call us all to order, and I'll ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cottle.
Good to be out here. Heavenly Father, Father of all, we thank you for the ability to gather here in complete freedom to discuss the issues of the city. We would ask that you remind us that we are all neighbors and that we conduct ourselves in a way that is pleasing to you. We ask also your blessing on those who are overseas and first responders here in the U.S. who are protecting both our freedoms and our lives. In your name, we ask.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I would like to ask Mr. Jody Lassiter to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That'll teach you to come to the next commission meeting.
Long time since first grade.
Nor did he get a pen. Commission, you have before you the agenda for this evening. I would ask that you omit items number nine and number 10. And with that, I will accept your approval. I get him. Is that okay? We're going to add Mr. Hank Linderman to that, so I'll take an approval with Mr. Linderman enclosed. Good? Thank you. We have with us this evening Mr. Hank Linderman, who has requested a few minutes of our time. I will say to you, sir, and the rest of the public, this is a nonpartisan board. City Commission is nonpartisan, so we're glad to have you, as with any member of the public, but this is obviously for public consumption, not to be construed as an endorsement. And that's our story, and we're sticking to it. So the microphone's yours, sir.
All right. Do I have to use the microphone?
No, sir.
All right. Yes. All right. Well, I'm very happy to be here. Mayor Mike, thank you so much for allowing me to do this. I had a wonderful conversation with Mike. I didn't realize that he was a musician, so we are fellow musicians.
Correct.
And that conversation will go on for a while. I'm here just to introduce myself. My name is Hank Linderman. I'm running for Congress. I'm from Kentucky years ago. I lived in Louisville and tried to earn a living as a musician for about 13 years. So back in the '70s, I played at Center College. And driving all over the district now, I'm seeing all sorts of places I used to perform at. And it's really wonderful to be back here doing that. Ashley was kind enough to take some cards from me, so if anyone wants to find me, I'd love to say hello to you, love to have a conversation. I'm still working on learning everybody's name. I do best once we've had a chance to sit down and have a cup of coffee and get to know each other. That's all I wanted to do was say hello. I'm going to sit around for a while and observe the meeting, and then I've got another meeting to run to in a little while. Mayor, thank you so much, and thank you all for...
You're so welcome, and you are certainly invited to stay, but we certainly will understand. If you choose to forego all the excitement, we will understand.
I love all this. I really do. I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Well, if you're going to run for Congress, yeah, you better love this stuff. We are now in the section of the meeting that we call "Hear the Public." This is the chance for the public to speak on any item that is on tonight's agenda. Mr. Curbaugh, AKA David Crosby.
Yeah. Well, I'm here to speak to the Commission in regard to what I understand is going to happen later on, that Ms. Lester is going to introduce an amendment to an ordinance, parking ordinance. So it's not specifically on the agenda, but that's my understanding. What I'm here to tell you is the ordinance doesn't... If you have a parking permit, which I do, and I use the Second Street lot, the ordinance doesn't say it has to be displayed. And it's my understanding they're going to suggest to you all that you change the ordinance. And I'm here to tell you that I think the ordinance is just perfectly fine like it is. With today's technology, it's very easy to find out who has a permit. The parking person can look up the vehicle on his telephone, probably, if it was set up properly. But what happens now is he... If you don't have your parking permit displayed, he writes you a ticket, and then you have to go, and the fine is $30, which is totally unreasonable, but I'll speak to that in a minute. My request to you is to don't change the ordinance, because I don't think it's a burden to the city. I don't think it's a burden to the administration. And I think the city fathers that wrote the ordinance years ago fully intended to avoid the display requirement, because you've already paid for a permit. We pay for those permits. We're allowed to park in those parking lots. And in my personal example, which I'm sure all of you all have experienced, I had one car, my normal car, had to go in for service. I drove another vehicle that day and got a ticket. And then it wasn't two or three weeks later. I switched them back, but I forgot to change my tag. So I mean, the whole requirement that you display the ticket, display the tag when you've already bought a permit is superfluous to me. So I strongly urge you not to amend the ordinance. However, if you do amend the ordinance, I suggest that you change the fine to $1, because remember, we've already bought a permit. There is no reason to kick me in the shins again because I simply failed to switch my tag when I had a car that had to go in for service, or my spouse needed whatever vehicle I was driving for something that day. Maybe her car was broken. So it's... I think they've taken this way too far, and they're penalizing the wrong people. So if you do go along with their request to change it, please go back and change the penalty to $1, because we're not parking illegally. If you have no permit and you're parking illegally, fine, I don't care what you find. They'll get them out of my lot, maybe. But if I do have a permit, I don't think you need to come back and get me again. And that was the defense I used when I simply went to the appeals board. And overall, I don't think you should change the ordinance. I'd recommend you not change it. It's perfectly fine. It doesn't need to be on display. They can look it up. When you go in and talk to the lady about appealing the parking ticket, she can look it up right then. The city manager can give her permission. The city commission can give her permission, say, "Yeah, they got a permit." Waive the, you know, waive the ticket. So I recommend you don't change it. If you do change it, I recommend that it only be $1.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right on into item one, which is the approval of the minutes from the May 29 meeting to a hearing motion to...
I want approval of the regular meeting of May 29, 2015, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any additions or corrections? Do you need more time? Seeing none, the chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. The CVB Tourism Economic Impact Update and Budget Update.
I'm going to make the practice. It's just a little bit...
Killing trees.
Hi. I try not to. All right. What am I doing, under here? Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Jennifer Kirchner with the Danville Boyle County Convention Visitors Bureau. And every May, June, we get our economic impact numbers from the state about the previous year. So I'm here to talk about a little bit of that and a little bit of an overview of our budget process. The CVB Board officially approves our budget at the next board meeting, which is on the 28th. Once it's approved, I'll come back in July and do a more in-depth marketing plan update and a more specific spending plan, but want to get that approved. But I did want to talk to you a little bit tonight about the process we go through. Whoa, I skipped. Huh. Okay. There's a... Whoa. Uh-oh. Alex, there we go. Okay. So there's... Sorry, there's actually a slide missing. That's my fault. I'm off to a good start. So this year, we had a 10%, 10.6% increase over our last year's total, which is the largest increase that we've ever seen. A large part of that is due to the addition of the new hotel. So we did expect growth, but to tell you the truth, charting the growth of this year has been a little tricky. There's a lot of variables. We've never dealt with the opening of a new hotel before. So we've adjusted as we've gone. So we won't know our local room tax numbers probably until about September or so of this current year. But we do know for 2017, we had over $63 million. What that includes is direct tourism expenditures. So that's people who came here, purchased something, stayed here, ate here. We reach about $95 million when we do indirect expenditures. And briefly, that is just when we include a multiplier effect to then show all of the support that those... The tourism entities then support. So our hotels employ a lot of people. They employ other businesses to help them operate. So it's quite a large impact for Boyle County. But 10% is one of the highest increases in the state. I wanted to also talk to you a little bit about what we do with the state. I don't often talk about our relationship, but that's a big part of what I do, is I act as a liaison between our tourism industry partners regionally, statewide, and our state lobbyists. So you may have heard about that show called Top Chef that Kentucky is on, which I have to tell you is no short of miraculous. Huge kudos to Kristen Branscombe. She seized every opportunity to make that happen, and it's paying huge dividends. They had actually started planning for the Year of Food and focusing on the culinary scene in Kentucky about two years ago. So they've been doing James Beard dinners. They've had a whirlwind media tour all over food and wine and People Magazine. The publicity that the state right now is providing for Kentucky in a positive way is better than I've seen to date. So I really, I really think they're doing a great job. And it's really fun for people to see all the different food. We have regional meals that we planned. You can get them in all the state parks. So there's really intentional and interesting ways that you can experience Kentucky's culinary scene anywhere you go in Kentucky. So basically, at the CVB, what we've done is in January, February, we started talking about the budget. What you have in front of you is just a little bit more detail of what this is, but essentially at the CVB, we focus on two things. We're here to market the county as well as invest in our assets so that we have something to market. So this year, with our branding and our soon-to-be website in place, we're focusing very heavily on the marketing, mainly digital marketing to launch the website. And I'll go into more of that detail, but the way we started having this discussion was that we broke it up into two categories. Really, we do marketing and brand management and asset management and development, marketing and community development. So you'll see, these are some of the things that we've been, over the years, we consider them. We do some, we change some, we add new ones. So these are some of the topics that our conversations have focused around. So these... The budget that you'll see essentially has those two categories, what we're spending on marketing and what we're going to spend on community investment and how that all works. Some of those things, I will tell you, don't require money. They're still just planning strategies that the CVB has discussions about to say, "How are we going to advocate?" Whether it be through legislation or locally, to stay involved in a conversation. So they're not all monetary. A lot of them are. But we try to cover everything in terms of what we do, from work and strategy to how we spend our money. And I think that's about it. What else? Can I tell you guys anything else about... Oh, that's our new banner. After... I hope you guys like the Brass Band banners. It's been great working with Ron and Janet and the Heart of Danville. And this is when the Brass Band one comes down, I think, any day now. This will be the next one that goes up.
How do you measure... How do you come up with that? 63 million?
Yeah. No, and there's actually a lot of numbers we get from the state, and I don't use, because I think it's a little bit more difficult to understand that. For this 63 million, there actually is quite a long formula that I have in an Excel sheet. But the majority of how it's factored is based on tax revenue generated, multiplied by your population, multiplied by the number of rooms you have. So, you know, Lexington is going to be... There's a whole gradient based on your size and your inventory that they basically calculate to get that. But there's also intense studies that are done. Centric, I believe, is the name of the company, that has been doing it for years. So they have studies where they actually go into restaurants, they go into gas stations, and it's done at random to collect some of that data.
Any other questions?
Huh? Oh.
Congratulations to you and Jamie and your board for having the largest increase in the state.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, no, no, no. We didn't have the largest in the... We weren't the largest in the state. One of them, though. Yeah, and that is Jamie, who's... Yeah, still kudos, right? That is Jamie, who's with me. And just in case y'all don't know, she is with us full-time and thrilled about her desire to learn tourism and to do more. So she's been a great addition to the team.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Here we go. Item three, Urban Renewal Committee Reappointments. You have in front of you. I'd like to recommend that Leon Hurley be reappointed to the committee. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move on that recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll move for a second.
Thank you, sir. We're in discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Additionally, we also have Gail Rice. I'd like to reappoint her to the Urban Renewal Board. That's a four-year term as well. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four is the first reading of ordinance number 1914, which you have in front of you. Mr. Lassiter, floor is yours, sir, unless you wish to defer to anyone else.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney, who's... Thank you very much for his assistance in preparing the ordinance for your first reading tonight. This is to follow up on an announced expansion at TransNav Technologies at the end and to the left of Corporate Drive in the John Stigall Business Center. And they are expanding with 27 additional new jobs, average wage 1652 an hour, approximately $5.6 million in new capital investment at that facility. So I'll throw the ball to our city attorney.
Thank you, Jody. This is the city's standard wage assessment incentive ordinance. It's most clear, if you flip to the exhibit at the back, and it shows you in a chart that Jody puts together on these, it's very helpful. We started doing several years ago what the jobs are, the activation dates, and the perceived payroll, and the total amount of the incentive. So you can see there from a year-to-year basis what the incentive is. So as long as a minimum of 10 jobs are created, up to 27 jobs during this period of 15 years, then the maximum incentive amount to TransNav is $100,198.43 as the city's component. The county has a component as well. And it is, again, the city, just to refresh your memory, is a 0.72% of the city's payroll that they would receive in that. And the standard clawback provisions are in there. So long as jobs are kept through year four, then there is no clawback. Prior to that, there is a percentage based on the jobs that are created or not created.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion? Ordinance 1914.
Move for approval of first reading of ordinance 1914.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion.
Just again, we're glad to have you come and give us good news. So come more often.
Thank you. And of course, they have begun their final approval with the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority, and so this will run parallel to their collection of state incentives. So we're right in lockstep with the state on this portion of the incentive package.
Excellent. Nice work.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Atkins.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just think it's important we share some of these numbers with the folks who are sitting in the audience. The Danville, that they're 0.72%. Boyle County is going to share 0.28%. And the total assessment is $9,277, some change each year. $66,079 for Danville and $2,597 for Boyle County.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Serres.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item five is the first reading of ordinance number 1915. This will be the first reading of our fiscal year 2018, 2019 city budget, which has been presented in great detail last commission meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1915.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry and Commissioner Serres. We're in discussion.
Do we need to have the title read in full?
I certainly can ask...
We can... We only have to do it once. We can do it twice, but we can do it on the second reading as well, as long as we're just made aware this is the budget ordinance.
Don't let me forget that, Donna. Any discussion?
Well, we have an updated copy in front of us. The number changed a little bit. Somebody explain to us where the number changed?
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. We increased the total appropriation by $20,000 following our meeting with the county folks in the ad hoc committee this morning to reflect the fact that we are carrying over $20,000 in unspent funds for use in the next fiscal year. That's the only change in numbers from what you've seen previously the last time.
It's in the general operating fund.
That's correct.
And it's your mark for what usage?
Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec.
It's... Part of the outcome from this morning's meeting?
Yes.
Then I think the other number is that the total budget is $51,678,276.
Keep it on, we'll be talking about real money. Any further discussions? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Serres.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Item six, Code Enforcement Report. Bridgette hiding behind there.
Good evening. If you review the report in front of you, you will see we've had a very busy May, and it's continuing. We had 236 inspections this past month, of which 56 of those noticed violations. We had a whole lot of grass-and-weeds complaints as that started. We issued 85 citations. We issued 55 business licenses. We placed 23 loans, which... Leans, leans, I'm sorry. And we recovered nine. And we have also demolished three out of the four properties that you approved. We are also going to... We've got it under contract to demolish 222 Martin Luther King as well. But the 702 Perkins, 206 North Second Street, and 134 Wilderness are on the ground. We are in the midst of renewing pawnbroker's licenses that you approved last year as a new license, so we're in the process of doing that. Those first licenses expire June 30th. We had a very successful preservation conference with Mark McDonald and collaborating with the Bull Landmark Trust and the CVB. And that was very helpful, made some good connections, and gave us some good information to get started. I put in there, in your packet, just to let you know, that the code staff will be attending the KLC BAD Conference, which is the blighted, dilapidated properties, June 28 through 29. So they have some good topics on there, so you could see those. So that was very good two years ago. They do it every other year. Our next DAHB meeting will be on June 20th at 9:30, if any of you are able to attend. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Bridgette?
55 is a good number.
Yes.
That's pretty interesting. I think last month it was at 35. I don't know. It's...
We're very, very busy, yes, that one. And the KLC Conference is coming up in September, yes.
Is that a reminder about just some of this...
That was just on the back of that conference, so, yes.
It's not going to cover some BAD issues, though, right?
They may have code enforcement issues on there. I don't know. I don't know what their agenda is as of yet. Everyone is very, very interested in the same topic that we've been working on already. And we get calls frequently to tell people how we're doing things here, so...
The issue that Mr. Curbaugh brought up, I don't... It's not...
The reason Mr. Curbaugh brought that up was the intent was to have that on the agenda, but we couldn't get all that together at the last moment, so that will come back at a future date. That is a recommendation from the Parking Regulation Board to do what we have done. I've done this for 14 years, and the procedure that he is talking about is what we have followed. And the previous officer who took care of that, that's always been the procedure we've followed. So the recommendation is to clarify that so that there's no question of it. But the procedure that we have always followed is to require a permit. They are cited, because we only have one officer. They don't have time to check license plates or to make phone calls. And plus, there's... I'm a citation officer. I have two codes officers as citation officers, parking officers, police. Any of those people can write citations in those lots. So we have... And we've notified those renters in the past that they need to have those displayed, so... But that'll be a topic at a future meeting for you to discuss.
But the citation, once you find out that they do have a permit, can it not be waived? Is that what I was hearing is not happening?
The recommendation from the board will be that we reduce that to $15 like we do with the handicap permit, because there is the time of using the software and the officer's time in writing the ticket and all the people involved in that process. So, and the parking ordinance does not allow staff to waive a ticket, except in the instance of having... When they have a handicap permit, we can reduce it to 15, but that's specifically delineated in the ordinance. But it does not give staff the ability to waive a ticket in the parking ordinance as of right now.
So my question is going to be if James Atkins has a permit to park in the garage, and he has three vehicles, he just gets one decal to put in one car?
Well, there's two different things there. If you're parking in the parking garage, you would have a proxy card if you are renting a space there, so you would... But you would have to have that. Normally, you would have that on your key ring. What Mr. Curbaugh is referring to is the Second and Third Street parking lots, whether that you get one permit per vehicle, per space that you... you get one permit per vehicle, per space that you rent. So, yes. But if you know you have a different vehicle, and you call us and let us know that you're not going to, you don't have your permit, you've forgotten it, I'll let the officer know, and they won't issue a ticket.
Bridgette, just a couple of questions as we're going to start formulating policy on this. Does the display tag, is it specific to a particular spot?
Not a specific spot, but it is color-coded for the lot. The Third Street has one, and the Second has one. That was the old procedure.
So, in theory, if you had it coded to a particular spot, like A15, it shouldn't matter if you have one sticker or five stickers, depending on the number of vehicles. Is that correct?
Correct. And that was our old procedure, and then we had a request to change it. Because what happens in the old procedure is if you park, if someone else parks in your space, then you have no place to park, because you're parking in another space, then you're going to get a ticket for being in the wrong space.
I'm just thinking out loud here, because I've not thought about these issues quite a bit, but we'll bring them back in draft form for consideration, probably as opposed to a recommended ordinance. If you are pulled over and don't have your license in your billfold or purse, and you're cited for it, and you present that at the court, or you don't have proof of insurance with you, but then you later provide it, my recollection is that those are waived administratively by the clerks. I don't, I can't confirm.
Plus court costs?
We need to probably find that out. To me, I would akin that to not having your driver, well, the chief will know that answer, I'm sure.
So, you pulled the chief over?
This is a very complicated, it's not, it's just a simple issue. The Parking Board has looked at this for several years now. The recommendations that we're putting in place, we believe is best for all people that are patrons of the lot and citizens. In the past, if you forgot your ticket, for example, your parking pass, because you have had your car worked on, and you changed vehicles, we have, as the board, dismissed that ticket. If you continually do that, we do not continually dismiss that ticket if it becomes a habit. But we do understand that people have incidences like that where, you know, these things come up and we forget, because it's not our day-to-day pattern. The board has tried to take those things into consideration. It is incumbent that there's, that does need to be something displayed there. Just for example, if you have a handicap ticket or a tag or permit, and you do not display that handicap permit or tag, and you go out to Walmart and park there, then a citizen calls us, and we are out there trying to run tags to see if that person has a handicap tag or not. That is an unnecessary task for the Danville Police Department to be doing. So, there is a provision, and the state required that that permit be displayed for that reason. And then if the person does have the permit, then that fine for a citation would be reduced to $15. So, what we're doing is we're trying to follow the same logic that state law has passed in almost other similar situations. And that will be the recommendation that the Parking Board submits to a Stephen for you all to review at a future date.
Anything further? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Scott, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Tonight, I want to mention two or three matters. The first being that next Monday, June 18, at 12 noon, we will have a special call meeting to discuss with our retained counsel, Mr. Jim Parsons, the establishment of a tax increment financing district in the city of Danville. And we have that scheduled at 12 noon. We plan to have a working lunch, so we invite all the commissioners to be present for that, as well as the public. Second announcement I would want to make tonight is that we anticipate full activation of our new 911 center with new equipment in the following week, not this week, but the following week, on Tuesday, June 19. If all our commitments with AT&amp;T are completed on time, and we believe they will be, so we should be going live with our new equipment and system on June 19. And in terms of just a general update, as you know, and as the public knows, we quarterly publish a newsletter for our citizens advising of current activities and what's coming up next. This particular quarter, the summer quarter, is a little bit delayed, because we want to be able to report in that newsletter what we hope to accomplish in next year's budget. And so, that will be published shortly following the approval of the budget in June, and should go out towards the end of June or early July.
Thank you, sir. Anything for Ron? Seeing none, we will move into the second section of here of the public. This is the time when the public's free to address any subject that's not on the agenda. Anyone?
Well, I'm going to ask, could a night light be put on at nighttime, come on showing Michael Smith's picture? Fog light, whatever we call it. I'm asking Mr. Scott.
We could look into that. It's some increased cost to obviously do that in terms of small installation and operating cost, but we could possibly do that. I don't know if that additional light would be an increased safety factor down there, or if it might be just more light, but we can look into that question.
Well, you know, we have, you know, lights come on down there. But they showing it. Picture, because I put some fog lights there, but one of the citizens thought y'all did it, and they said it was poor lighting. And one of my residents said they could see his picture, but it made me mad, so that's why I'm asking. I took it up.
I'll look into that and give a report at a future city commission meeting, possibly the next one, or certainly the first in July.
Because Michael Smith played a big part of Danville, you know. He deserved more than that. He was a good man, had a big car.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, don't, Mr. Hun.
Mr. Hun, your turn.
Everybody knows, Mr. Hunter, James Hun, I have a question about the Urban Renewal, a board, a committee, or whatever it is. I understand that it hounds Section 8. What does Section 8 have to do with Urban Renewal? I thought Urban Renewal was far too, be renovation of different areas, you know. Now, come it is governing, you know, governing Section 8.
It is.
I know it is.
It's a good question. Isn't the Housing Authority?
No.
No?
No.
It's different. Donald Frymer is it.
Oh, I can't even grab that thing. We're not supposed to respond to him, but I think he needs to contact Urban Renewal in Section 8 and ask that question. And I want to just show to him that there is some talk at the Housing Authority Board to get involved with Section 8 as well. But those are both government programs that, really beyond, I think, the scope of city government. Well, you all appointed the board, so you all should know about it. You should be able to answer that yourself. I shouldn't have to go out and answer nothing. Yeah. Federal, oh, I don't want to debate him. Federal, for anything.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into commissioners' comments. I'll lead off by saying, maybe it's time, when we get a little bit of time, to look at outsourcing our parking. Other communities do that. They don't, they don't expend internal staff time, nor much-needed police time. So, just a thought on outsourcing. I'd also like to congratulate and thank Bridget Lester, because at the restoration conference, the remark was made to me by Mr. McDonald that you all were the highlight of the conference for him. Because to see the city involved to the extent that you all were is not a, is not a common thing that he encounters. So, that's great. And then finally, I want to share again a thanks that I got from a constituent for the active code enforcement and the reduction of iSource. Anyone else?
I'll go. I also got a thanks recently for the new sidewalks on East Main. The citizen lives on East Main. There were lots of people and children walking along the street, and now they are off the street and on the sidewalk. And also, we missed the mayor over Brass Band Weekend, but I think we sufficiently filled in, took all four of us.
I heard you did so well that the mayor won't be needed next year.
We had the very capable Judge Brown drive us in the parade, and.
Just saying.
Rick was supposed to join me on stage to do the welcome, but they did it a little early, and he missed it. But hopefully, I did, did you some justice, so, sorry you missed it.
I thought she was going to tell the community that the city commission ordered the weather for the Brass Band Festival this year.
I gave the mayor credit for that. I gave the mayor credit for sending the weather.
Thanks for that. Take what I can get.
It's probably a good thing they went early, Commissioner Terry, so that you weren't blighted by me on the stage up there. I do want to give a shout-out, though. Good segue to Robin Cooper and the staff that organized Brass Band, along with the CVB and all the volunteers. It was a wonderful event once again. Went off very well. Pioneer Playhouse has kicked up, and we had a really strong showing Friday evening, so we're glad to have that moving in our community again. And announcement, Bill Pollam Memorial Father's Day 5K this Saturday. He was, again, once again, I've said it before, a strong leader in our community, and we're sorry about his loss, but we like to remember him.
I'd like to go back on the Brass Band, because I don't think the public is aware of how many guests the city and the county and CVB had. We're trying to promote economic development, promote the community, and doing it by way of the Brass Band Festival. Jennifer, what do we have? About 30, 40? How many, how many were here, do you think?
We had, we invited about 400. We had 75 RSVPs. We had about 40.
Perfect. Okay. 40 this year, 400 next year.
We'll keep trying.
There you go.
And I've mentioned it before, but I don't think it was heard, so I don't want to forget the involvement from our police department during that whole festival. They're all over the place, helping us out. Appreciate that.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move into item eight, payment of the bills. Chair will accept a motion to accept the bills as presented.
I move that we accept the bills as presented in the amount of $708,070.45.
We have a motion by Commissioner Terry, second by Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries. Ron, unless there's anything else or anything else to come before the commission, I was, I would ask that, that everyone that is within the sound of this voice, keep Virgie Johnson in your prayers. She has been a stalwart in this seat on the Board of Adjustments, and I have had the distinct pleasure of serving with her. And if you ever had the chance, or ever had the chance, she's masterful.
Yes, sir.
At conducting what can be a tough, technical meeting. She's just phenomenal at it. But I'd ask that you keep her in your prayers.
Just for the record, we are skipping number nine and 10 for now.
Yeah, we said that earlier. Yeah.
I didn't know if we announced that yet.
Hmm, did I? I did, okay. You're not listening. Anything else to come before the commission? Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. We adjourn.